All right. It's four o'clock, four p.m., and this week we've scheduled a meeting of the National Department of Education will come to order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have, as displayed on the screen, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And then we have the approval of the November 26 minutes which have been distributed beforehand. There were no changes suggested. Do we have an approval to accept those minutes as presented?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Pritchard, all right. So, members, I'd like to invite Ethan Strand and Coach Huber up to see us at the front. Thanks for coming. Just where you want to be already. Your parents here with you, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Hey, there they are. Ethan is our 7A individual state champion boys' cross-country state meet, and that was in November, right? Yeah, individual state champion. Fantastic. When you run a cross-country meet, how many miles are you running?
It's a 5K, 3.1.
3.1. And 3.1, he ran it, and get ready, 15 minutes and 24.29 seconds. That's a 1K for me.
I don't think I can drive.
Fantastic. All right. Coach, you know Ethan very well. Do such words on his back.
Well, one thing is, he's been nominated for Gatorade Cross-Country Runner of the Year, so there's a handful of athletes in that group. But just jumping off that springboard, this guy's very special. Last spring, he won two individual events in outdoor track, 7A as a freshman. So, that's been, I think it happened once before, I think he won one event, but not two. So, that's something on the radar that tells us something about him, and then also being a sophomore and winning this year in cross-country is very special. Based on our Vestavia records, he's shattering everything that we've had in the past with his age and talent. So, the future is very exciting. He knows that. Trying to keep it simple, and he does a good job of keeping it simple. I guess the neatest thing, if you follow this guy in the future, is that he loves to race. And of all the things I could say about him, he does everything really well, but he loves to race. So, when you see him on the track and he's in a race, he'll find a way to win it somehow, no matter what position he's in. And he's not perfect, but he knows where to go.
Giving up all your coaching out there. Did you record those?
We're excited to see how the future unfolds for him and with the team. And, you know, track's special because it's a team, but individuals, and so it's really, it's a great sport to coach because of that.
And the team finished second this year.
They did.
Which is fantastic. Well, so your reputation precedes you. I heard about you, not who you are, several months ago in visual, one of the assistants on the track one afternoon during practice, and he was talking about this big guy who won the state championship last year. And so, this is a fantastic achievement. So, any words you want to share with us?
Well, I mean, it's been awesome running at Vestavia. And then, well, last year, Bryce and James obviously helped me out a lot throughout outdoor track and being a freshman, so. And then, we also went 1, 2, 3, and 2, and 1, Bryce and James.
So, I would think, like she ran after you run around Vestavia Hills, it's pretty easy.
Vestavia's really hilly. You go down to home, win, it's just fun.
Congratulations. Fantastic. Congratulations. Well, members, we have a special guest, Frank Hernandez, who's with us tonight. Mr. Hernandez, pull on it. There you are. Mr. Hernandez is very involved in the community, particularly PTOs at Liberty Park, where he's a resident. And I was at a band booster meeting earlier this year, and they were talking about this guy named Frank Hernandez, who has transformed the band booster organization and how they profit from concession stands, and has quite a thing going there. So, I tried some out myself, and they really are good. So, I was very impressed with the operation he had. But recently, Frank was honored with the Lifetime Achievement Award from leadership Vestavia Hills. And I asked Jennifer to just say a few words about you. Frank said, "Come on around, Jennifer."
It's my pleasure to speak with Frank, because we've worked together for many years. So, Frank served at both the Liberty Park Elementary and Middle School PTO. So, it's not very common that we get a dad that wants to come serve the PTO. He served on our board. He created our website, email distribution that all the PTOs use as a benchmark. He renovated the band concession stands from the ground up. He has rolled them out to every sport. He rolled them out to the middle schools. Things you don't know, like when Frank invests all of his vendors or go back into Vestavia community, all the restaurants he uses are Vestavia businesses. So, he tries to partner with the community. He serves on our Vestavia Hills soccer board. I could go on for hours about all the things Frank does, but if you don't know Frank, if you've ever gone to a ballgame, Frank is right there at the concession stand. We're getting you through. Frank serves in everything he does with a big heart, with a servant heart. So, it's always, "How can I help you? What can I do?" We've been on some difficult things with difficult people. Frank always has a smile on his face, and he's always there to help. So, there is no better role model for our kids, our school, or this community than Frank. He does more for this community than anyone I can imagine, and no one deserves this for him more. So, congratulations.
As you know, one of our tenets of our mission is unparalleled community support, and I really thought this was a model because of all the places he's gotten involved in and actually engaged in doing things. So, what is the secret recipe to making concessions really take off? Coach Huber might want to know that. Or you share it there.
Well, that's, no. No, it's, it really has been a lot of help from the community, help, engage, find out what they were looking for, what they need, simplify, and make it fun, so people can get engaged and just find good food, which we have a lot in Vestavia.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Aaron, Mike and Ian. All right. Well, we have everybody else, it looks like. Okay, we have this year's National Merit semifinalists from Vestavia Hills High School. So, if you're one of those, come on up, and we'll call you out individually. There should be 11 of you. Dr. Pritchard, if I might put you on the spot for a minute. I want to ask you a question with regards to what this means for the scholarship opportunities and things like that. There are 11 National Merit semifinalists from Vestavia Hills High School this year. That is third most in the state. There are 16,000 semifinalists in the nation, and so this is an distinguished group. And I'll call out their, all their names in just a few minutes, but I thought it might be good for everyone to understand what this actually means and how important it is.
Certainly. So, these students took the PSAT in their junior year, actually took it in their 10th grade year as well, as a practice round, and then in their junior year, they took the PSAT, which qualified them for the National Merit Scholarship Foundation program. And based on their score, the CUSP score that's achieved, or the set for the nation, they are ranked accordingly within our state. And so, these students represented the top students in the state of Alabama based on score on that particular test in that year. It's normed out nationally. So, for Vestavia Hills, you know, they are tremendous representatives for us just in general, with all the different things that these students do. I look at the students that are standing in front of you, and they do a whole lot more than just take PSAT tests. You know, if we had time, each of them could go through their story, but for them, what we try to present them to do is fully participate in the scholarship opportunity. There is a lot of money tied up in national merit, and each of them have opportunities moving forward based on their story, what their future plans are, what areas they plan to study in college, on what scholarships they have available to them. So, we've had students in the past range everything from, you know, the very base National Merit scholarship all the way to the top scholarship that they provide in the entire nation, just a couple of years ago, foreign of our students. So, these guys are in the pool for it, and they'll do really well. They'll participate well in this.
Hey, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Walter Javon.
I'm Crosslow Blunt.
I'm Julia Stewart.
Bryce Hutchinson.
I'm Rutika Saman.
Nicholas Muscolino.
I'm Allison Levine.
Cindy Nelson.
Colin Baffert.
Lauren Nelson.
All right. What you're saying is number 11, he could be with us tonight, of course, and other things. Most of them couldn't come last month because they were too busy. Dr. Pritchard, you're right.
Guys, so if you wouldn't mind, go back through. People like to hear where you think you might want to go to school. So, what's your top choice? Or you can say, if you don't have one, you don't have one. But if you want to share, I'm not going to share. No? Nobody else to say?
I really like the University of Virginia.
I got deferred like two days ago, so now I'm going to...
Bad time of year, yes.
I know ultimately I want to go to med school, so if I get into UAV's MSAP, which is guaranteed med school, I'd be pretty good.
Awesome.
Virginia Tech or Georgia Tech?
Maybe UGA or Alabama. We'll see.
Yeah, I don't have a first choice.
I'm looking at UAV and Auburn, mostly going to computer science and cybersecurity. So, right now, leaning more towards Auburn.
Possibly North Texas for music.
Live range of talents. Well, congratulations. I appreciate it. I know there'll be many more wonderful things for you to come, but I really appreciate you being here this week, a week of finals and other things you've got on your mind. We really appreciate the work that you've put in. So, congratulations. Okay. Next part of our administrative reports is a overview of our state report card. Bailey's going to start us off tonight. This is information that I think would be helpful to you, knowing that there's a mandated state report card that will be coming out in the next few weeks.
Yeah, and more than anything, we wanted to go ahead and give you an idea of what you would be looking at, what's, this information comes out and it's reported to the public. And we're just going to walk you through what information is used to determine each school and district's grade, and just a little bit of additional information about those indicators. And so, we wanted to start with the rationale and purpose for that. In 2015, ESA determined that we needed to publish a report card for districts and report our performance to our stakeholders. And so, the report card just serves as that. It is really just a snapshot of how we're performing. It is to communicate that to our stakeholders, just like a student in a classroom, and it's only one data point that we look at. It's very important, and it has some important measures, but it is by no means the only thing that we look at. We look at things like these students who are just standing before you and some other pieces of information that we'll share in a little bit also. The most important thing for you to know when you're looking at the report card or to know how will be assessed district-wide and within each school, is if they look at these five indicators, student achievement, well, there are multiple indicators, but student achievement and academic growth, attendance, language proficiency, and then in the high school, in the high schools, college and career readiness and graduation rate. So, in the elementary schools where we do not have a 12th grade, of course, these two indicators are not considered within the, within the report. But all of those things are very critical to student achievement and student success, and so those are the measures and data points that we'll look at. And really, again, like I said, it highlights areas of strengths and highlights ways that we can improve as a school, and really, it just serves as a concise communication for parents. How is my school doing? How are our students doing? Maybe even, how can I jump in and help? How can I support our district? And generally, how are we performing? So, we want to look at each of these data sources, and Brooke and Jane Marie are going to walk you through each of them in a little bit more detail. But academic achievement, of course, we had the ACT ASPIRE for several years, and we had some longitudinal data that we could look at, and we no longer have that, so we're using Scantron to measure growth in grades three through eight. We're also using the Alabama Alternate Assessment as well as the ACT in 11th grade. And so, that is something that's a very significant indicator for us in terms of our high school measurement. Academic growth, because we've moved to Scantron, and it's a little bit different from the ACT ASPIRE, we look at where students are in the fall, and then we measure them, we measure them again in the winter to inform our instruction, but then we look at them again in the spring and see what their growth looks like. And so, that is reported on the card. Our English language learners, we look at their proficiency, how have they grown over the course of the year. Chronic absenteeism is measured, and again, at the high school level, graduation rate and college and career readiness indicators are factored in to the report. Okay, so just a little more information about one of the first indicators which Jennifer mentioned is progress in English language proficiency. So, all of our students who are identified ELL take the ACCESS 2.0 each spring, actually late winter into spring, and then they have to show growth from their previous access test. So, that's one percentage that we're looking at on the report card, is have they made The next one is academic achievement. And so, as Jennifer mentioned, for that, we're looking at the ELA and the math portions of Scantron, which were given in grades three through eight. And then, we're also using AAA and ACT for 11. And then, once students take that, they're kind of assigned a level based on their score, so level 1, 2, 3, and 4, and they're looking at the percentage of students who are proficient on that. And so, for Scantron, that would be levels 3 and 4. They also look at growth. So, how do our kids do on the state standardized assessment from one spring to the next? I mean, from the fall to the spring to see if they've actually shown growth and made progress. Is the assessment for growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, or from one year to the next? So, from fall to winter, yeah, to, to growth. And see, this year's different because we have Scantron, where in the past it's been ASPIRE. Yeah. So, kind of... You have no benchmark from the other test? No. Not really. And they're in the process of developing another assessment. This is in the interim. Yes. Then we also have graduation rates, and so for that percentage of students who graduate within four or five years, a first entering ninth grade. And then, the next indicator is college and career readiness. And so, we're looking at the percentage of students in that cohort who achieve at least one of these indicators or more. So, one could be that they receive, or that they score benchmark on any of the ACT subtest. They receive a qualifying score on the AP exam, so for us, that would be, we don't do the IB exam, but for AP would be a 3, 4, or 5. They've been enlisted, have been enlisted in the military and have been accepted. They are taking dual enrollment. Achieve silver or higher, then they take ACT work keys, and they also can have approved industry credentials within Career Tech. So, if they achieve at least one of those, then that helps and feeds into that percentage. Another indicator is chronic absenteeism, rectified by any student who has been absent, excused or unexcused from school 15 to more days. We do know that in the past, there've been issues with how we code those in INL, and those have been rectified for this coming school year. But you will see maybe some higher percentages across the state, because we do have students involved in school-related activities for which they have an excused absence, but they still have been marked absent in the old INL way that we had to categorize their absences from class. But that is one area that is part of all, or both, report cards, because there's going to be a report card that will show you a mock-up for the elementary and then one for secondary, or what they define schools with a 12th grade. So, an excused trip, the math team goes somewhere, that counts against you being... Right. But now, we have a way to code that. That's something that we brought to the state's attention across the state. It wasn't just our school system. Really, to say, you know, we have a lot of students who are involved in academic endeavors during the school day, and yet they're being marked, and it's counting toward our score in chronic absenteeism. But this school year forward, the old report card, I mean, the report card's going to be based on past year, so that's going to be something that is not going to be reflected a lower percentage, but that's across the state. So, but that was rectified this summer. So, you have two sets of, these are just visuals that can show you the areas in which the schools without a grade 12, which would be seven of our eight schools, right? And then, the school with a grade 12, with our high school, that you can see that you have factored in what Jennifer went through, the points, the college and career readiness that Brooke went through and explained, that's a piece of it, as well as the graduation rate. So, there are new indicators added into the report card total whenever you have a grade 12. These are samples. So, this is what it will look like when it comes out. This is a prototype from the State Department. This is a school without a grade 12, and I know the print is fairly small, but the other thing that it breaks down is it breaks down your subgroups, and a subgroup is defined if there are 20 or more students in that. It will break down subgroups in relationship to the score, but everything else is reflected that we just talked about in relationship to chronic absenteeism, your growth, your performance, and then your individual schools receive, and then here's the mock-up of a prototype with a grade 12. It has a little more information in it, just like we said. We have the graduation rate. We have our college and career readiness indicators reflected in this, and each school receives a grade in the district. So, we will receive both individual school report cards, and then we will receive a district report card. So, it gives us both pieces of information.
Do they grade the district differently, or is it just an aggregate?
It's an average of all. Takes into account all the factors that we just talked about. And just to reiterate, some of the other things that we look at as a district, of course, we're looking at the things that are taken into account within the report card, but we're also looking at other significant indicators within our district. We're taking, of course, we take this snapshot, but we also look at things like our National Merit finalists, and we have some information about those. We've had, last year, we had 13 National Merit commended students, $32 million in scholarships offered, 91% of our graduates entered college. What is also important and is a measure of growth in our district is that we're having more interest in the Academy of Craft and in some of the other CTE offerings. The AP exam administrations, a couple of years ago, we decided after sort of an evaluation of those programs that we wanted to make that available to more students and ensure that more students had opportunity to take AP classes. And so, we've seen enrollment in those classes and students taking those exams grow. And anytime we have students, even if they don't earn a 3 or higher on the exam, we know that they're better prepared for college and career if they take that AP course and work through it. 75% of students who took AP test score to 3 or higher last year, and of course, we look at ACT and SAT scores. We have three current National Blue Ribbon schools, and those are just a few measures that we look at. There are all sorts of other indicators that we look at in terms of achievement and success in our elementary, middle, and high schools. So, we wanted to be sure that although there is great information, very important and significant information in that report card, there are other things that we look at also and encourage stakeholders to dig into in addition. Of course, they could contact us, but they can also go to the State Department website and has all of that information for them. So, do you guys have any questions or thoughts on getting our results?
Yeah, the state law mandates that be produced annually, I would expect around December 31, that those may be released to the public. There are market informations now. The state report cards have been released, but none of the others should be made public. And around that same time, there'll be a federal report card as well, just to confuse matters a little bit more, and it only looks at basically reading and math scores. So, they both come out around the same time, and so I anticipate that happening before the end of the year.
And it's really going to hurt our ability to trend data out because we were on ASPIRE, now we're on this.
It's a very difficult process. They tried to use the match to very different instruments, and so a lot can be said about the scores that we get. But I would say one thing about the scores, you know, our system will do very well. Where a system that has high academic achievement can be penalized is the academic growth part, because there's not a lot of room when you're near the ceiling on those scores. And so, that can happen, typically does, for systems that have high academic achievement.
Those are not what I had in mind last time.
That's right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Okay, on to item 5, financial statement. Brian?
Good afternoon. In your packet, you have the November 2018 financial statements and check register for your review. On the budget-to-actual comparison report, I would like to note that budget revenues are up a percent and a half over last year. This is primarily due to the receipt of our $1.3 million allocation of the one cent Jefferson County sales tax money. This was allocated over all the Jefferson County schools based on our ADM, and our total expenditures compared to budget for last year are in line, right at a little under 18%. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled through November 30, 2018.
I would recommend the board approve the financial statement for November 2018.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around the financial statement, and do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thanks, Port.
According to item 6, under consent, I would recommend the board approve the items related to debate, basketball, government, math team, and another math team.
I would like to note that the debate team goes cooler places than when I was on the debate team, just for the record. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Under business, item 8, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement with Leighton Associates Architect, PC, and the board in the amount of $60,000 for modifications to visitor side bleachers for Vestavia Hills High School as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve? Second. Second. Chair, any questions? Are we going to make them less comfortable for the visitor?
More comfortable. More accessible. Yes, more accessible.
We don't want to be too comfortable with visitor side.
As is. This will offer ADA access to the visitor side for bleachers.
Very good.
Very good project. Tomlin?
We're looking at May. I know we're still having a conversation with high school to make sure that all the activities, that construction is not being one of all the activities.
That shouldn't be too overwhelming from a construction standpoint.
Four or five weeks.
Okay. Super. Any questions? Other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Item B, I recommend the board approve change order number one with Yearing Construction Company LLC in the amount of $108,983.28 for additions to Gresham Elementary School as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around a change order for Gresham Elementary School, do we have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Sorry, Chair. Any questions? We knew it had some change orders coming.
That's right. This is for, for the system to allow for HVAC in the gymnasium there at Gresham. This number represents less than one-third of the overall cost. This is the cost of the units.
Okay.
So, we're looking at Christmas break, when we'll start that project, and then, I'm going to correct if I'm wrong, but I believe it's the middle of August, end of January when that should be completed.
Yeah, we're at the end of January, all works, I believe. Unit should be here around middle of January, hopefully as well.
Our friends with Jefferson County are being most accommodating on this, as well as our construction, our 12 classroom, but they're allowing us to get this put in during the school year, and hopefully there'll be visas.
Yeah, come out of PMA, they'll be happy to have it in there. Got any other questions? Awesome. All in favor?
Aye. Item C, I recommend the board approve change order number three with Playlock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of $55,805.50 for renovations for a new middle school, package B, building addition, renovations as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second? Second. Questions, commentary?
This is just a miscellaneous group of small ones to come on this continuing project of finding new things. So, I don't anticipate this to be the end of it either. Really keeps coming up with stuff for us to change.
To the death scare goes past.
I asked you before.
So, this is just all the kind of stuff that you don't really find until you get underneath.
That's right. And I do think it's important to point out that even with the facility assessment, we knew there would be some things until you get behind walls and uncover root that you're going to come up with some things, and this is, this is part of a renovation project. So, unfortunately, it comes with territory.
Any other questions? It's not more cafeteria spending, is it?
Not yet. Not yet. That's coming.
All in favor?
Aye. Item D, I recommend the board approve naming the current visits middle school building Vestavia Hills High School freshman campus effective with the 2019-20 school year.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Questions, commentary?[1792.66] Questions, commentary?
I think Lisa wanted to name the campus after Lisa.
Because they just made a Dr. Baker campus. Because I'm a doctor. She loves that.
Still trying to sell naming rights or something like that. No, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Item E, I recommend the board approve the contract with Frontline for Personnel Services as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second? This was, I recall, I was reading this this weekend, this is what we brought on last year to solve for the time and billing.
Yes, that's right. It was a different company.
Different company, yes.
This is a new company, and it's going to give us several different modules to do some different things that we want to do with personnel that's not offered with the current service that we have. And it's going to be aligned with the same price, too.
The board's approval last spring, or excuse me, last fall, there had not been any action taken when Courtney was hired, as well began to look at that contract. And so I do commend her on negotiating our way out from that penalty with the company that were gracious to work with us and to get this one.
Yeah, so it went from manual process to software-defined process, and now it's going to be a better software.
And it's going to replace some of our manual processes now.
Guess we could take more manual stuff and put it in there. Any other questions? All in favor?
Item F, I recommend the board approve the textbook committee members as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? Second? Is this the committee we're putting Jerry on, where he has to read all the textbooks front to back and offer a write-up about each one?
Jerry's Tom here.
Put me on whatever you want.
Final act. Jeffrey?
Just, it's a group that we bring together, and sometimes there are traditional materials adopted, sometimes there are non-traditional, I might be, for example, music that we've adopted for some of our music classrooms. We wouldn't adopt a traditional textbook. But the committee will also pick up any other changes that are necessary with an AP book or something else that might be outside of the regular curriculum adoption year. So it's a group of parents that we bring together, and they look at all of our materials that we have up for adoption. So we'll know a little more as we get closer. There's a course of study that's in draft form with the state. We don't know whether it'll end up being something that we'll have to put further the textbook committee at. So some of this wait and see in regards of what they'll be adopting, but it's important for us to have committee input on that process.
Do you know of any textbooks that have to be adopted this year?
Not so far. I mean, we can anticipate maybe something. What happens is materials get outdated, or they, not out of print, I'm sorry. And so even if the material is good, we can't find replacements. So we may have to adopt, even if we're not really changing a course of study too much just to be able to have the materials we need for studies.
And then the cycle works on about six years. And so while you may have particular content areas that come up each year, you might not be person textbooks, i.e. music last year, but all the contents areas will come up every six years.
Other questions? All in favor?
Item eight, I recommend the board approve personnel actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the personnel actions? Second? Any questions? All in favor? All right, that brings us to the public comment portion. We invite anyone who'd like to make public comment to step to the podium, let their commentary to the items on the agenda, state your address, and lessons are dismissed, please. Anyone like to offer some commentary? Great. If any none, we are adjourned. Thank you.